Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. City Council acting on behalf of the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency and the Bellflower Financing Authority, Monday, February 26th at 7:00 PM. Would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Denton?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Here.
Mayor Schnablecker?
Here. Okay, tonight, we're gonna have Councilmember Juan Garza lead us in the invocation, and Parks and Recreation, PJ Milano will be saying the flag salute. Will you all please stand?
Will you please raise your hand? Dear Lord, we come before you as we gather here tonight. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting today, so that we may accomplish our goals here tonight on behalf of our great city, our residents, and our businesses, all in an effort to work together to improve the quality of life for all. We pray for those affected by the recent school tragedy in Florida, that we will protect them and be close to the families who are suffering such great loss right now. We also ask that you please be with the men and women in uniform in our community and abroad who bravely serve our communities and our nation every single day, and that you cover them with your protection. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanted to thank everybody that attended the annual State of the City event last Thursday at Sims Park. The event was well-attended, and as usual, the city staff did a great job coordinating everything. The presentation had a lot of great information and fun pictures of Bellflower from the past to current. If you were unable to attend or would like to watch the video of the event, it will be edited and posted on the city's website in the next few weeks. Also, the Bravo Awards will also be posted on the city's website soon. And I just wanted to, for those people who couldn't attend that thing at the new event center, the main event center, it really is a beautiful facility, and the event was just beautiful the way it was set up, and you're just ought to yourself to get over there and look at it. It was a beautiful venue. And now, if, Mayor Pro Tem Ray Denton?
Thank you, Mayor. The long-awaited Bellflower Boulevard project will soon begin after being deemed Priority One for traffic congestion hotspot by LA County. This project is being funded by the LA County Metro Transit Authority, so please prepare accordingly for heavy traffic delays in the area of Bellflower Boulevard, south of the 91 freeway. And that's between the 91 and Artesia Boulevard on Bellflower Boulevard. Construction is planned to begin this spring or early summer. Woodruff Avenue or Clark are suitable alternative routes. Everybody's been through that intersection when they, on a bad day, it's gonna be 100 times worse when the construction starts. Imagine only one lane in each direction there with heavy equipment. But a longtime widening project is finally here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sunny Santenaz, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Sanitation District will be hosting their 12th Annual Earth Day Celebration on April 14th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, where they invite families to attend this and celebrate environmental awareness and education with arts and crafts, speakers, performances, food, and more. The event will be held at Sanitation District Administration Office located at 1955 Workman Mill Road in Withier. That's where the 605 and the 60 freeway meet. This is a great family event to help promote earth. If you have any questions about the event, you can call the Sanitation District at 562-908-4288, extension 2311. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santenaz. Mr. Coops, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bellflower Volunteer Center is still collecting items for the 2018 Spring Basket Program. The Volunteer Center works closely with community groups, churches, and service clubs to provide spring baskets to students in need. All donations for the spring baskets need to be turned into the Bellflower Volunteer Center no later than March 6th. Bellflower Volunteer Center is over there at the edge of the parking lot at Sims Park. Some suggested donations include books, balls, puzzles, games, toys, socks, gift cards, and toiletries. If you'd like to be part of this program, please contact the Bellflower Volunteer Center, and you can find them at 562-925-9003. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Mr. Garza, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to remind everyone that the Miss Bellflower Pageant is coming soon. The Miss Bellflower Pageant has a rich history of volunteering while representing the community with kindness and grace. I want to take a moment to acknowledge all the hard work, effort, and energy the young ladies invest, and wish them the best of luck. The official pageant will be held on Saturday, April 7th, at the Bristol Civic Auditorium. For more information, please call area code 562-444-5140, or visit www.missbellflower.com. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart, public comments, please.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the City Council.
Anybody want to speak on an agenda item? Somebody has to be first. Let's go. No? Go on once, go on. Here comes Robin.
You need someone with, right. Exciting times, guys, girls, women, men, friends, family. Bellflower Family Alliance will be hosting a Quarter Mania, and if you've never been to one, you will have a blast. And if you have been to one, you know what I'm talking about. So, it is Saturday, March 10th, 2018, and the doors open at 10:30. We provide lunch, and the auction starts at 12:00. You will have a great time, and it is really a lot of fun. And it will be at Calvary Baptist at 14722 Clark Avenue in Bellflower. If anybody has any questions, you can contact Melinda at 562-810-8835. And it's open to everybody, and I would love to see you guys there. You'll have a great time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a lot different than the last meeting.
So, my name is Shane Patel. I am a recent, oh, I just recently purchased a home in Bellflower. I am, what's?
My name is Diane Kennedy, and I am a homeowner in Bellflower. Our concern is about the bar on Artesia and Virginia. There has been a recent killing there, and we have a lot of children walking up the streets. It's been late at night. There was one killing. The male was left out. The body was picked up at 7:00 AM when the kids are going to school, and the recent one was over a weekend, late at night. There's a lot of families coming in and out. The thing is that we, our concern is that our kids come in and out of the streets. There's not a lot of police roaming the area, and then also, our concern is that if one of our kids are out, they might get shot. There's not a lot of police around there.
Did I speak to you at the Little League opening? Gentlemen? Yeah?
No.
No. So, there was another guy from your neighborhood who was talking to me at the opening of Little League Saturday about the problem?
Yes. And just context, too, I mean, this is the second killing in front of our condominium unit. The first one was a couple of years ago, it was in the news, and it was in our driveway. The second one was an apartment complex right next to our units, and it was in the, they shared the same parking lot as the bar itself. So, this is close to home, very close to home. We have a lot of kids running around, people walking their dogs. It's kind of a safety issue as well, and we saw some police presence, I think the Bellflower Public Safety Officers were around, but that was the first week, and we haven't seen them since. So, it's just a concern we wanna bring up to see what we can do as a community to protect all of our kids and all our elderly and everyone else, so.
Well, I'm gonna be talking to our Director of Public Safety and our city attorney and our city administrator to see what we can do about the problem.
Mr. Mayor, in the meantime, I'd suggest that he talk to Mr. Hockman on his way out today, and then he can talk to him about some initial things they can do to help improve the neighborhood there, and then whatever else you wanna do with us is fine.
Yeah, because I talked to a gentleman at Little League, and he said however many petitions, however many people he needs to bring down, they're all upset, and we need to do something about it.
I think we need to engage.
Okay.
I thought the process would start with Mr. Hockman.
Yeah. If you've talked to Mr. Hockman, he's the Director of Public Safety, and he'll give you the information, what we need, and we'll start working on it for sure. No problem.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Josh Murray, and I'm here on behalf of the Clifton Bracken's Seek Library, 9945 Flower Street. I'd like to let you know that this Saturday, March 3rd, we're going to be starting our new weekly Yoga for Beginners course. That's gonna be 9:30 to 10:30 AM. This is a free program for adults. Relax with beginners yoga while working on your balance and flexibility. This is an opportunity to learn the fundamentals of yoga and get an introduction to various poses, and please bring your water bottle and a yoga mat. And this program is generously sponsored by the Friends of the Bellflower Library. Thank you.
Thank you.
It wasn't me. He looks like you, though.
He looks like you? Okay, Mr. Stewart, 11:08.
This is consideration of possible action. You're Dr. Public Attorney, consider the following actions relative to the city's cannabis regulations. One, adopt emergency ordinance of 1353. It urges the ordinance of many various sections of the Bellflower Municipal Code regulating cannabis business permits and conditional use permits. Next, read by title only, wait for the reading, introduce ordinance number 1351 and ordinance of many various sections of the Bellflower Municipal Code regulating cannabis business permits and conditional use permits. Adopt Resolution Number 18-05, a resolution implementing Title 14 of the Bellflower Municipal Code by amending and restating application requirements, minimum qualifications for cannabis-related business permits, the number of available permits, and standard conditions of approval. And finally, adopt Resolution Number 18-07, a resolution adopting a fee to recover the cost incurred from processing applications for relocating medical cannabis business. And Randy has a very brief staff report for him, and will answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Mayor, before we start, if you don't mind, I'd like to recuse myself from this item, as I've done when we've tackled this item, due to a Fair Political Practices Commission determined conflict of interest for me and my firm. Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. On February 12th, Council rejected a proposal to allow transfers of operation permits for cannabis businesses. It did, however, endorse the idea of allowing applicants to relocate to different locations of four cannabis-related businesses. Also, there was a public benefit section that was endorsed by Council, along with an accelerated activation period. The proposed regulations require permits be activated 30 days after being awarded. Also, there were distance requirement changes from business to business from 1,000 feet to 500 feet. The item also includes some housekeeping items that were more completely described in written materials that you were provided. That's a summary of this, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff there?
So, I do, yes, Mayor? The conditional, say, the, on the, not the transfer, on the, going to a different location and that scenario. A CUP was done at one location for that property, and then they chose to move, so that, so you have two forms. You have a CUP cost, and then the cannabis permit cost. And the permit is based on checking out the operator and doing those things that do vigilance and just for the transfer. So, what I'm getting at is the new location requires the full CUP and the fees to get it there, and the other permit fee is just the adjusted prorated fee from, it's already been, the operator's already been checked out and gone. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what was discussed last time is having simply a recovery of the amount of money it would take to process the relocation request. So, it would not be the full $28,500. It's the 31 and change that's proposed as part of the resolution in front of you. The reason for that is because there was a joint application of both the CUP and the operations permit for that one location. So, if an applicant, for example, were denied both the CUP and the operating permit for that location, they could come in, make a relocation request for a different location. The city would process that. But we don't have to review the operations plan, we don't have to review the security plan, we don't have to review a lot of the parts of the original application that cost a lot of money. So, what's being proposed is simply a flat fee, and then if there are additional monies that are needed to review engineering plans, for example, vehicle traffic studies or anything like that, that would be a time and materials basis, and we'd recover actual costs from that. Is that, does that answer your question?
Yeah. Fee recovery, and a fee recovery is for both avenues.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. That's what I needed to know. That, I just thought they were separate, but no, that's good. Just what's fair.
Mr. Coops?
I have no questions.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just for clarification here, in page 32 of the staff report, Section 4, denials during the hearings. So, my understanding is, 32 on the lower right-hand corner, so Section 4, denials during the hearings. So, going back to the list of the applicants on December 18th, so if an applicant was denied both the CUP and the MCBP, he or she cannot basically apply again using this transfer list.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you recall, there were really two types of applicants that received denials. There was one type of applicant that received denials because of substantive reasons. So, for example, that particular applicant didn't cooperate in previous code enforcement efforts by the city to close down an unlicensed cannabis facility. The other type of applicant that was denied was denied either upon a locations basis because they were too close to another cannabis facility that had been previously awarded a permit, or they had applied for dispensary permit, for example, and the city had already given out the four dispensary permits. So, in the latter instance, so if an applicant was denied because, not because of some substantive reason that could be identified on the record, but simply because of location or because all the operating permits had been already dispensed, sorry, wrong word, had already been issued, those applicants could apply for a relocation request because their application had already been fully vetted up to that point, and the only reason that the council had not issued either an operations permit or a CUP was for the location or because those permits had already been given out. So, there was one applicant in particular, for example, that had made the request that prompted the City Council to go down this path at the last meeting, where this applicant, because of parking restrictions, had been denied a CUP and an operations permit, and that applicant requested at that point to relocate to a different place and reapply in essence for that location. So, and I forget exactly which applicant that was, I'm sure if they're in the audience, they'll identify themselves, but that was a different sort of case than other applicants that were denied simply because either a code enforcement action had already been taken at that location, they hadn't cooperated, or for some other substantive reason. Does that click?
So, in that case, we're giving this applicant an opportunity to find another location.
Correct.
Correct? So, one that being fair to, let's say, other potential applicants who didn't apply before December 18th because they could not find a location at that time.
And that, and the proposed resolution with the qualifications gives that opportunity. It creates two categories of applicants for new permits in essence. There are the applicants that have already had their applications fully vetted, but simply didn't get a CUP or an operations permit in December, and then there's a second tier where they may not have submitted an application simply because either there were 24 or 30 people in front of them, or for whatever reason. The latter category would have to pay the full permit price and have their applications fully vetted, but could propose a different location, and then it would be up to the council whether or not to actually issue any permits for those particular applicants. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, I think there are, are there two operations permits still available and three CUPs still available? So, there are still permits available for those types of applications. Those are, again, not the ones that have been fully vetted, and so they would be responsible for paying the full permit application price of the $28,500. What the council focused on the last meeting was simply those applicants that had already gone through the whole process and simply wanted to try out a different location. Does that make sense?
Would this be kind of time limited? Would they have some kind of, in perpetuity, that they're gonna be in the waiting list? Or what's the plan?
The, there's a huge delegation of authority to the city manager to make that determination. So, really, again, if you go back to the two tiers, you talk about the applicants that are in the queue right now, if you will. Those would be processed first, and anybody that came thereafter would be based upon criteria established by administrative policies, or the council can simply make that determination tonight.
So, following up the question from Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem Denton, regarding the processing of the CUP, since, for example, let's say, in this instance, we have an applicant who was denied both the CUP and MCBP, which is the permit, because of lack of parking requirements, things like that. So, when they find another location, that means the staff will be expending so much time and effort again, all these things that are associated with a CUP. Are we gonna recover the full cost?
We believe that we'll recover the full cost. The reason for the initial application fee, if you will, is because of all the additional layers that have been put on by the cannabis regulations, and that includes a security plan, an operations plan, a criminal background check, those types of things that all add on to the costs and the layers of review. Those applicants that have already gone through that, we don't incur those costs. What we're incurring at that point is a determination whether, and I'm just using this as a hypothetical, whether across the street, there's another facility that's available, and whether or not that's an appropriate location. We believe that we'll be able to recover the staff costs associated with making that determination or recommendation to the City Council. If there are additional engineering or specialized third-party consultants that we need to bring on board, we'll simply charge the applicant the actual time and material for those types of reviews and recover the cost that way. So, it's both a flat fee and a time and materials fee. The time and materials fee is undetermined at this point, but we believe that will capture the actual staff time, if you will, for the, with the flat fee.
Yeah. Okay. Another question, on page, I just want to make sure that the applicants are fully understand. When you talked about the public benefit on page 37, is that number six, D6? Because, again, it's full disclosure, I wanna make sure that applicants understand exactly what they're getting into. Is that the one that you talked about?
That is correct.
Okay.
And there are definitions in there as well.
Okay. That's wonderful. Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, just to be clear, numbers five and six are both new sections that were added pursuant to the council's direction with regard to qualifications. It adds somewhat more subjectivity to the evaluation of any particular application, but gives the council additional flexibility in terms of determining whether or not one applicant is more deserving than another in terms of obtaining a permit.
And when does this start to apply? Does it apply to the new MCBPs and CUPs? So, for example, we already gave four MCBPs for, MCBPs are permits, for the sake of the audience, we give out four dispensers already, so they will not be applicable to those four, unless, unless they move to a different location.
Correct. Or unless they have not activated their permits yet. There are still several permatees, which is what the council observed at the last meeting, that have not come in and paid their $25,000 administration fee and actually obtained a permit. So, if the council decides to move forward with the proposed course of action tonight, those persons that were already awarded a permit but have not yet activated a permit now at the beginning of March will have 30 days from tonight to actually activate the permit, or that permit then becomes available for new applicants.
So, so far, how many have activated their permits already, as of today?
As of today, there are two permits that have not been paid for, and they're from the same applicant.
So, so far, we all have two activated?
No, two not activated. So, seven of the nine have been activated.
So, basically, they're all covered with these new requirements. Is that right?
The, well, the permits that have already been issued would not have these two new qualifications applied to them. Anyone that applied for the remaining permits would have these qualifications applied to them, and any person that was awarded a permit but lost it after the 30 days because it wasn't activated, those permits would then be subject to these qualifications. So, anyone that currently holds a permit would not be subject to these two, but anybody coming in after this, after tonight would.
But after 30 days, if they don't activate, they'll be covered under this?
They would be covered, and actually, those permits would go back in the hopper, if you will, and become available.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, I got a question.
Thank you.
What's the definition of activation? Is it open for business, or just going through the state procedure?
All permits get the state license, they've activated them.
But not using it? If we chose, see, the idea, the idea of the 30 days of not using it?
Well, there's still a limitation. They have to act, there has to be business conducted on the site in six months.
That's where I was, there has to be business activity. And what are the thresholds for business activity? What, I know, six months, but what's a threshold? One sale?
Oh, yeah, one sale would do it.
You know?
They got in there at the 11th hour and put a sale in.
Would it be why, if the council decided to have some dialogue about that, could that be changed as the intent of not skirting the business? Obviously, the reason we're here is because of, this is a revenue generator, and people aren't pulling the plug, that's, you know, get right down to the brass tacks of it. I can just see someone running in the 11th hour in 29 days, they got my permit, and...
I don't know about that.
You don't know about that?
Because they still have, they're not licensed to sell in the facility. They'd have to have plans in, at least for a temporary sale, if not the permanent place to sell, so.
Okay.
It's not that easy to do so.
Continue on me.
We have time to discuss.
Come up with some dialogue, talk about some dialogue, whether to... Come up with some dialogue, talk about some dialogue, whether, if we can circumvent that scenario or not.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question.
Yes, Mr. Coops.
What would be the qualifier for a cultivation? I mean, we talk about the dispensary, you've got to be open for business. Do you have to have plants in the building? Do they have to have a certain maturation, or how do we qualify that?
Again, transactions, plants in, inspection, you go and look to make sure it's working, because they're paying a different tax, because they're paying a square footage tax on that. So, if they have the plants in the building, the square footage tax will start accruing that day. So, we can see that evidence.
They have to have plants in the building.
Yeah, yeah, it's occupied that space, yeah.
Now, another question, back to what Sonny was talking about. The qualifiers right now is you have to have had the $28,500 paid in to even be able to play in this part of it. That's the cutoff date. Those 20 applicants, omitting those that did not qualify because they had a previous history, but no one else can come to the table and say, hey, you've changed the rules and I want to come along now. That, that, we're going to stick with our, was it 20 or 21?
That's up, that's up to the council, we're right now.
But what is written now, that would be the.
We're sticking with that number, the original applicants.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll second that.
You made a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I made the motion.
All right, okay.
Okay, does anybody want to speak on this agenda item?
So, are we still going to be at 12 maximum? Because that would only leave three that would be.
The answer is yes.
Yes, 12. And so, but the other two, the, if they don't activate it in 30 days, I mean, they're, they're part of the, the new regulation, or they, they're still part of the old one? You know what I mean? Those nine are part of the old regulation, but two have not activated. Do they stay as part of the old regulation or the new one you're going to be voting?
I'd love to stay as part of the existing, if they want to reapply and do it again, that's fine, but.
In 30 days, even if they don't activate?
As of, because as of right now, we have no plans to let anybody else in.
Okay.
So, it'd still be that group.
Do we have a list of all, all sites that are actually qualified?
Yeah, just notify the city clerk's office and a PRA, and we'll get the list to you.
Okay, oh, email it, yeah. Because I assume, because there's 12 out of how many possible locations, 30, 40? Or they just pick a new one?
We, we don't have a list of every place in the city that could have, there's no list that exists like that.
Only the people that applied and the people that have been approved.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that. Must be a boring topic.
Okay, gentlemen. Well, we, we've talked this horse to death, so. What's your pleasure?
A little discussion, Mayor. Where I was going with, the intent of this is, is to get qualified operators operating and drive sales, which drives tax revenue. That's the intent. Concerns about someone at, you know, 29 days or something, come in and gets it and starts dragging it out for another however long, and it's not the intent that we want. I guess a question to the, yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tag teaming on what was discussed before opening the public hearing, one of the items that was discussed was actual commencing operations. And so, if that's something that the council would like to do to, as a demonstration, then my recommendation would be to add on to the list in proposed revisions to Sections 14.08.050 and 17.94.030, and the ordinances the following statement. So, as a matter of explanation to the public, those sections explain what activation means. And so, we would add on an additional layer to explain what activation means, which would read as follows, "And commences operations as determined by the city manager." So, the entire sentence would read, "Each cannabis business permit issued pursuant to this title must be activated within 30 days after the public hearing approving the cannabis business permit. Activation occurs when the cannabis-related business pays all fees required by this title, accepts all conditions, provides evidence that it was issued a valid conditional use permit pursuant to Title 17 of this code." And then the new language would be, "Provides evidence that it applied with the state of California for all applicable state permits and commences operations as determined by the city manager."
Which gives them, of course, a latitude to appeal it if they don't like the decision.
And with that is some evidence for the city manager, because when the applicants have applied for a permit, we have a business plan, we have revenue sales, we have all that kind of stuff. Could the city manager use that in conjunction whether, A, it's.
We could develop criteria for what is an open shop or what is.
But you can use that because it's, it's on record.
Correct.
Because they have the business plan, their obligations, their economics of the whole business. I just wanted to.
Well, they're not plans, they're significant operation.
You know, you can use that to, I guess, as evidence of discretion of what they're supposed to be putting out.
Right, I mean, there's going to be.
We know we can't, the market, we know the market.
There's a chance there's going to be judgment call, somebody gets their plans in at the 11th hour, and they're good plans, but they're not opening up, that sort of thing. So, there's going to be some judgment calls in that, yeah.
Okay.
Does that work, guys? Did you see where I was going with that? And that's, that's the only save that I got.
How about, how about cultivation? Cultivation, because they pay based on a square footage, right?
Correct.
So, whether they have plans or not, they will pay, correct?
Well, again, it's, it's when they, when they start to do business, and that's a little harder to tell. I gotta think on that one.
No, what I'm getting at is, based on council member Coops' comment about plans, it doesn't matter whether they have one plan or two plans or zero plan, once they activate, they start paying the tax, because they pay based on square footage, not based on sales, not based on.
But the square footage is actually used for cultivation, so we would.
The canopy.
Yeah, so it's the canopy cover on that. We don't, we won't know what that number is until they actually start operating.
Oh, okay.
So, I'd have to, it's an interesting question, because I'm not exactly, that's a more difficult one to see, yeah.
So, you need to kind of work, work it out in terms of your process.
Yeah, I gotta think that one through, and what would trigger an opening date on the cultivation.
Okay.
Separately, though, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to point out that there is separate delegation to the city manager to come up with those criteria. So, administratively, to mull it over and figure out what operation commences for each particular use, those can be set forth an objective criteria which would be brought back after actually implementing them, just to make sure that the council's on board.
I can circulate those on the website and to the council separately. After the fact, so, nobody's in a mystery on what those criteria are, so, it's not, it's going to be some pretty common sense tests on whether they're open or not, yeah.
Anything else?
You might even do all the utilities, whether or not they're on.
I was just thinking about the utilities, that might be a quick fell swoop on that, how we could do that.
You gotta have water and electric, so.
If they can get water.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt urgency ordinance number 1353. An urgency ordinance amending the various sections of Bellflower Municipal Code regulating cannabis business permits and conditional use permits with, as amended with the dialogue that I've just discussed with the attorney.
I'll second that. Although, Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify one thing, maybe this is a kind of a typo on page nine, section one, D, during its meeting on February 7th. That should be 12, right?
It should be 12, yes.
Okay. If you can make the correction also.
Is that acceptable?
Well, I gotta keep going, so I'm not.
Okay, keep going.
We good? You good, Sonny?
Yeah, so far.
Okay, I just. And then waive further reading and introduce ordinance number 1351, an ordinance amending various sections of Bellflower Municipal Code of cannabis-related permits and conditional use permits. And then adopt resolution number 18-05, resolution implementing Title 14 of the Bellflower Municipal Code by amending and restating application requirements, minimum qualifications for cannabis-related business permits, the number of available permits, and standards and conditions of approval. And again, adopt resolution number 18-07, the resolution adopting the fee to recover the costs incurred of preceding applications for relocating the medical cannabis business.
I have a motion, do I get a second?
That work, Mr. Attorney? It was a complicated one.
I thought it's going to be one by one, so I apologize, so it's all of them.
No, it was kind of all together.
I second all of them.
Okay.
How's that? And, Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify one thing here on page 38, section 10. It seems like there's something missing on section 10 on the second line. Not more of such MCBPs may be dispensaries?
Yes, sir, it should say no more.
Than four?
No more than four, we can put that in there, certainly.
I think we're missing no more than four.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else, any more discussion?
No.
Could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Protem Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Schnablecker?
Aye.
12A, please.
We need to call councilman, member Garza, oh, there you go.
This is consideration of possible action to adopt urgency ordinance number 1354, an urgency ordinance authorizing the public educational and governmental PEG fee on state video franchisees operating within the city. And to read by title only, waive further reading, introduce ordinance number 1355, an ordinance reauthorizing public educational governmental PEG fee on state video franchisees operating within the city. Ms. Dover has the brief staff report on this and the reason why it's being taken up now as an urgency ordinance.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. In May 2008, the city adopted an ordinance establishing a 1% fee for support of PEG channel facilities and activities within the city of Bellflower. The ordinance has never been repealed and did not include any expiration date. It was intended to apply and to regulate all current and future franchisees. Charter Communication, which operates within the city under a state video franchise, had a video franchise that expired on Feb., or January 2nd of this year, and was also renewed the same day. Since the state franchise was not technically expired, it was rather renewed in advance of its expiration date, and the city's ordinance has not expired. The city can reauthorize the PEG fee ordinance to avoid unnecessary debate and avoid a lapse in collecting any PEG fees. That's the summary, and I can answer any questions you may have at this time.
Questions?
No.
Questions?
Well, we need the money.
Yeah, we better get with it.
So, we can continue broadcasting our meetings, so.
And soon.
So, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion right away.
Your turn.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce, adopt urgency ordinance 1354, an ordinance reauthorizing the public educational and environmental fee on state video franchisees operating within the city.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor Protem Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Schnablecker?
Aye. Item 13A, please.
This is consideration of possible action to approve the original, sorry. All right, we'll try again. It's consideration of possible action to approve original prioritized park project list related to the Los Angeles County Wide Conference of Park and Recreation Needs Assessment for Los Angeles County Measure A funding, and I believe our Recreation Parks Director, Mr. Milan, is here to make a brief staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. We're revisiting this topic because funding is now going to start coming into the city for our prioritized park projects, and when the park projects were approved, it was two years ago, so we just want to revisit it and give a quick update on the process, how the, what we know, at least at this point, how the money will be coming in, and different things to consider for, for these projects. I do want to make one quick, just a word of caution, we still don't know a lot of the administration policies from the LA County Recreation Park District. That's coming, we're going to another meeting in April or May, and we'll get a lot more information, but we are anticipating getting our first round of funding in July of this year. So, with that, I'll go ahead and start, and just a quick historical recap on Measure A. In 2015, LA County paid for a countywide needs assessment, and there were 180 different areas studied. City of Bellflower was one of those, and we participated in that. There was a comprehensive parks and amenities inventory, a comprehensive needs report was developed for each of the different areas, and we held a community engagement workshop, and that, that workshop produced 32 total produced projects. In 2017, or I'm sorry, 2016, we brought to council a total of four projects. So, there were originally 10 that were to be submitted to the county, and because some of our projects were larger, they counted as three each, is how we got to our, our four prioritized projects. And then in May 2016, the LA County Board of Supervisors voted to place a tax measure using the needs assessment on the November 2016 ballot. And in 2017, or I'm sorry, November 2016, Measure A did pass with 75% of the vote. Last year, 2017, the county then was analyzing all the tax rolls and the funding allocations that would be distributed to the different areas that participated on a per capita improvements formula and per capita improvements formula in high or very high need study areas. And Bellflower falls within to the very high need category. So, that brings us to where we are today with our funding just around the corner, and our estimated annual allocation towards our prioritized project list is $392,000. And that's based on population of Bellflower, the square footage that's going to be taxed, and it's weighted for high and very high need areas. In addition to that, there will be an annual allocation distributed to the city for maintenance and servicing towards grant projects that, any projects that we have funded through the grant as well, so that will also be coming to the city. Here's the prioritized list that was provided to the council in 2016. We had a sports complex, and that was one of our jumbo packages, or jumbo projects that took up three of our, our list, and that would have included multiple fields, including soccer fields and baseball slash softball fields. Item two was a synthetic turf soccer field, and that also counted as a larger project because it was a specialty facility, and at the time, we weren't sure if that would require land acquisition as well. Number three on the prioritized list was a senior center with no particular place in the city, just a high priority for a senior center within the city. That also would require land acquisition and would be considered a specialty facility. And number four on the list was a new community center at Corruthers Park. The other items that were on the list and came off because of the larger projects were the tennis courts, sand volleyball court, infrastructure lighting at Thompson Park, add and replace restrooms throughout, throughout the city parks, repair baseball softball fields at Corruthers Park, and a multi-purpose field. Some things to consider as we, as you consider approving this list or reapproving it, the city of Bellflower is in the high need category for needed parks. Another part and piece of Measure A is there's a larger amount of money that's going to be available in a pool for competitive grants, and we are going to be, we do plan to be very competitive for those because we are in a high need area. So, that's something we want to consider moving forward. There's still a lot we need to know about those, which we're hoping to get at the next meeting we go to. Measure A and the city's annual allocation will go on in perpetuity. The amount will be updated as the county updates the needs. Right now, the way I understand it, they'll probably re-update the needs assessment after 10 years, and then they'll make adjustments, whether it's they need to continue funding at the levels they are, capital improvement projects, or more on the maintenance and need side, side of things. So, that will change. I don't think it'll change drastically, but it will get reevaluated, and the allocations could change with that. This one is, the city already has $2 million budgeted for a soccer field. The location was to be determined. This was put in through, last budget process through the cell of the water system. And one thing, one thing I would recommend as, as you go to look at approving this list, my recommendation would be that we move the soccer field item, which is number two, move it to number one, still use our $2 million. move it to number one, still use our $2 million, and let that be a little win as we kind of get our feet wet going into Measure A. And we can, we can get a soccer field now within the next year or two because it's already budgeted. The extra, the estimate we have for a soccer field, including upgrading the lighting, would be for Sims Park. Will include redoing all the softball fields as well to make them compatible and multi-use. And the estimate we have for that is $2.25 million. And I can show you real quick what that would look like. But that's what I would recommend is we go after that first because the other bigger projects are going to require land acquisition, and we're going to need longer planning. And we're looking probably five to 10 years as we plan out for those and aren't anticipating a huge sum of money coming in right away. So with that, while we're on that item, just real quick, what would look like at Sims Park? You'll recognize this already because we already have the softball fields there. What this project would do would make everything in this area synthetic turf, including the softball fields, which is a regular practice now amongst multi-use facilities and multi-use sports facilities. But it could give us use of two soccer fields at once, one softball field plus one soccer field, one regulation-sized soccer field. It gives us a lot of different options we can do within the footprint that we already have. And something like this, including upgrading the lighting, upgrading some of our stands, making, installing some portable uses of stands for the soccer fields as well, would be about $2.25 million for that. So that, that's the only variation that I would recommend on the previously proposed is to move that one soccer field up because we can get that now. We're already budgeted. We have it. We don't have to wait for money for years to come. Something else to consider is that certain projects on the list will require land acquisition. And Measure A funds can be allocated to... to purchasing of land. And then also, and as I mentioned this briefly, the Recreation and Open Space District and the Steering Committee are also looking into potential processes for agencies to receive in advance on funding for up to between 14 and 16 times their annual allocation, if that's desired by certain agencies and if they meet certain eligibility requirements. And they're looking at a, different types of bond measures they may do in conjunction with cities that would be interested in this.
That's over and above the grants?
That would be our 400,000, our $392,000 allocation, getting in advance on that.
Getting in advance, okay, one time. So you can get 10 years' worth.
The way I understand it is you could get, let's say, 14, 14 times.
Right.
And, but you're paying it off for 20 years, so you're not getting those distributions. And there's still a lot more they're trying to figure out there. So that's all I had for the presentation. And our, the recommendation, staff's recommendation is to approve the prioritized project lists related to Measure A funding with moving the single synthetic turf soccer field up to priority number one. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments or further discussion.
Any questions?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, um, the, thank you for the presentation. It's really comprehensive. Thank you. The one question I have, a lot of the questions I had you already answered, so thank you for that. But the one question I had regarding the $54,000 for maintenance and servicing. So if, if for some reason the council agrees with your recommendation, that $54,000, like in the first year, would it have to be used on the soccer slash softball fields? Or would it be, could it be used, is there flexibility in the way we use that? Do you know?
They're, they're still working that out.
Okay.
Typically, what that would go towards, I'll give an example. Our gymnasiums, our floors every year get refinished. And that, none of that money comes out of that for maintenance because those floors were installed with Prop A money in the past. So we get maintenance money for that as well, and it goes to servicing a previous grant. There was discussion, and I don't know where it is and what the final determination is, that a certain portion of that maintenance and servicing fee could go towards the capital improvement project. But I don't know, I don't know yet, and we're hoping to learn more at the end of April, beginning of May.
Okay, thank you. That completes my questions, Mr. [inaudible].
Might as well go right down the line. On the, the $2 million that we have budgeted and then the $392,000, that puts it just shy of $2.4 million. With our budgeted money and then the Measure A money.
Yes.
$392,000 and then $2,000 and so on.
Correct.
And you said the soccer field is $2.25.
The estimate, the estimate I got last year was $2.25.
Do you have off the, is it, you know, the countywide Measure A... tax, does that bring in like $100 million a year? Do you have, is there an estimate of that, or is it more than that? Or, if you don't know, that's okay.
I may have it here with me.
I was just trying to wrap my head around what kind of money you're, they're dividing, dividing up. I still have problems with Measure H.
If I can get some assistance on the Elmo here, I can probably...
And then, yeah, while you're doing that, I got another little question.
Okay. So up in the type, top right-hand corner is revenue.
$94 million.
$94 million.
A year.
And then the breakdown here, that top 35, category one and category two, those are our regular allocations that we're going to be getting that are non-competitive. It's category one and two. Categories three, four, and five are all going to go into the competitive grants each year. And then in your packet, there's a breakdown of what each city is getting per this formula that they have. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, you're helping me build on it. Yeah, that's, yeah. Does that say 77.8% is for the grant? The grants? Is, so 78% of the $94 million is for grants?
Yes, it's for, it's for the non-competitive grants, which is the $392,000.
Oh, that's non-competitive grants?
Right, those are the top, those are the top two categories.
So that leaves just about 25% for the grants.
Yeah, for the competitive.
So 25% of the $94 million estimated.
For the competitive grants.
For the competitive grants. That's where I was going with my question, is the grants. I know we apply for grants in-house, and we're pretty good at it. Is it something we need to get more expertise on? Because this is a lot of money to help us, help staff with writing a grant.
Yes, we're going to need help, especially just with staff resources. We're going to need that. We're good at it.
Okay, I know you're good at it, but...
But we, you're, you're correct. We want to make sure that doesn't go. And what we want to do is... What we want to do is with, if we get this one soccer field, what we want to do now is start building on that, whatever our number two project is, if it's a sports complex, and start getting our engineer estimates. Start getting initial plans done so we can package that in the grant and say, we're already working towards this. We know we have this money coming in, and here's what we have, so.
They want to see the money going to good use, as anybody does. Back to the project list. And one question, I understand why you want to move the soccer field to number one, but I also saw that was the, there was two, the community center at Carruthers. Is that, is that it was? Oops.
Yes.
Okay, the senior, that's, the first three are a lot of money. And the community center at Carruthers, would that be a new facility or a new building?
It would be a new building. And another way to think of this, when you're actually looking at this, a senior center and community center could be the same.
Same, okay, that's where I was...
And if we wanted to combine that, that's something we could look at. Is that worth going in at Carruthers Park? Or is there a better area throughout the city, once we got to that, for a senior center?
Why, why I brought it up is that's the only one on there without land acquisition. Land acquisition is the biggest price of any project.
Correct, and now if we...
If we don't have the land, and I'm thinking, would, do you move up the community center? You know, to, because it's, it's something you can do sooner.
Oh, I would agree. I think that would be a good suggestion.
I'm just letting that float on the top here. That's, that's the end of my questions.
And I do want to make one comment just on the soccer field. So we're looking at replacing, if we put in synthetic turf, it has to be replaced. There's a life, there's, at some point, the turf part of it needs to be replaced. So the, the time that it'll be in service is probably seven to 10 years. So what we're going to need to think about, too, is how we're going to replace that. The cost won't be $2.25 million because we're only replacing the service level. But these grants also will go towards helping to replace that because that's part of the maintenance and servicing of that as well. So I did want to just backtrack a little bit on that real quick.
Yeah, you can budget a percentage of the maintenance fund into a special account every 10 years to do it, too. Right.
Mr. Coops?
Well, since we won't be mowing the grass over there, we'll take it out of public works.
Where's the land?
Oh, he looked up.
That's one, that's one less riding mower, as I was talking.
When the $392 comes in annually, when do you expect it to come in for the first time?
July 1 is what they're stating, so I'd probably say later in the year.
Maybe September.
Right, and there is, if we, if we don't use it all for that year, there, I, I don't think they're just going to submit us a check. There's going to be a process for receiving that money.
We'll get the $392.
But we're not going to lose it. We're not going to lose it. So if, let's say, we do the soccer project, it's $2.25 million, we have $2.4. $150,000 will probably roll over to the next year. And the next year, if we have a project or we have pieces of that project going that we need to get a disbursement for, we'll get it. So there'll be some type of banking system with the county.
And Mr. Stewart, we're still on track to obtain the $2 million from our sale of our water system?
Still on track.
All right, so that, we all have a wish list based on that. But I do think that because the idea of selling the water company was going to be used for recreational ideas, that was, that was a promise that we made. And I'd like to see that we go forward sooner rather than later and like to see a completed project rather than something that we're storing up money for in order to do something 10 years from now. You know, one of the things, what is your idea of a senior center? What is that composed of? What goes on in a senior center? Other than shuffleboards, let me sort that down, but...
You'd, you'd have daily programs like you would for a, almost like a day camp. You'd have a recreation coordinator there coordinating programs throughout the day. Sims Park right now serves as our senior center, but we don't have a lot of programs. You'll have meals in there every day, so the Human Services Association would have their meals. There's card clubs, there's our new quilting club. It's just a place for them to gather and congregate that they would call their own.
But you're talking physically?
Well, yeah, I don't know, the activities.
Yeah, it'd be meeting rooms and assembly room, a kitchen. I mean, there's, in fact, probably two assembly rooms of decent size and eight or 10 meeting rooms, reception area. And then, of course, the staff office, in some cases, two staff offices, depending how big the center is. I've seen those things, and sometimes they become a hive of activity, and they require quite a bit of support.
And while I, kind of, processing that kind of facility at Carruthers, which is not exactly the center of the city, you know, it's kind of obscure back there.
Right.
Sims, obviously, is a more central location. We have what we used to call the teen center. And I know that we've never put wheels back on that because we never had the funding for it. Could you ever envision that property or that building being used for this purpose, as a senior center?
Yes, I would like to, if we were to go down that road, I would like to investigate that entire corner on Oak and Clark and some different...
So that would be an acquisition of the women's club.
Correct.
You know, but I do know we have an asset there. And we own, you know, one of the concerns we've had is trying to acquire more property. Why not utilize the property we have to the best extent? And I just, and that's why I asked the question, what would be involved and what square footage, what kind of activity?
Yeah, what's, are you talking about 14, 15,000 square feet for the building? Is that true?
Yeah, probably.
$200 bucks per...
There are, there's a community center in Lakewood, which is really small, but they've made great use out of the, out of the space, including dance rooms, multi-use rooms. There's lots of different things we can do. So the size of the building, I'm not too concerned with. It's, we can make it a hub. There's, we can get creative and do some really good things.
But wouldn't you say that the Carruthers location wouldn't be as advantageous as having it in Sims?
I would agree with that.
I mean, we'd have more use of it.
I would agree with that.
In your long-range plan, what are you ever envision happening with a teen center? In the heart of the Apostolic Church?
My dream would be that whole corner would become a senior, senior center, maybe even a senior center slash youth center.
So then we would take out the volunteer area there?
Correct.
And incorporate that whole property?
That could go into, yeah, so our volunteer center operations, our, the staff, all the staff offices we have there could go either towards Sims or in the new building. If we were able to acquire that property that's right there, I'm sure we could work out an agreement with the women's club on their usage of a room at one of the facilities. Even without that property, I think we could get something in there. You'd also see, I would want a, if we're having a senior center there, a turnaround, a bus turnaround, either at the front somewhere for the dialeride service, which is very active at Sims Park.
But you can kind of see where I'm going with this discussion, that we have an asset there. Now, I know the whole deal is that we got to respect what the women's club want to do, but at the same time, be cognizant of the fact that that would be something that we could obtain at some point in time if the, if they wanted to relinquish that and use our facility. But, but anyway, that answers all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Santenaz?
Yeah, just following up on your, on your question, Mr. Coops. So why can't we have two? One in Carruthers Park and one in Sims Park in terms of multi-purpose center? There's money coming in. It's in perpetuity. There's going to be coming $392,000 every year. We can plan for that.
Yeah, we can definitely plan for it, and we just, we, we need to know. And I think it's something we realized when we realized we weren't getting a lot of money at the upfront, is that this is a long-range plan. This is in perpetuity. Though, so these big projects are in perpetuity, and we need to plan big-picture-wise. So that's, I don't think that's a problem that the community actually said that would be nice, is to have a senior center somewhere throughout the city. They didn't say Carruthers Park. And then for there to be a community center at Carruthers Park, like there is at Sims and Thompson Park.
And I've seen other centers because it's a multi-purpose center because typically, the seniors use the center during the day until about mid-afternoon. And when the young ones, the kids, use it, afternoon until evening.
Right, exactly.
So it's a perfect combination in terms of usage.
Yep.
So you can have one, one space and two uses at the same time.
Absolutely.
When would the competitive grants be, be available?
I believe they said the first round of grant applications will most likely be 2019. I will have more specific dates when we go to the Education 103 meeting coming up. I'll have more specific dates of when they're going to start the application process for those grants.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is I think we need, we must be ready for that and come up with really a good plan so that our application will be on the top.
Right.
Okay. And do you have any price tags for the others, like the sports complex, just ballpark? So you said number two is about $2.25 million, and then how about senior center, just roughly?
$5 million?
Well, these numbers are the ones we got excited about when we first saw. So these are all provided by, by the county, but they included land acquisition. So if you're looking at a 15-acre. So the number that they put next to a sports complex was $88 million.
$88 million, okay.
Is what they put next to it.
All right.
But to put that in perspective, for a multi-use soccer field, including land acquisition, which we probably won't need if we keep that, they've put $31 million. And we know we're going to get that soccer field if that's the direction we go for $2.25, right around there. So these numbers, I think they went for worst-case scenario. And, and knowing that, knowing probably there's no land in Bellflower, so where are you going to get this land without having to purchase 10 acres of property?
And also eminent, eminent domain, most likely?
The senior center, 20, they put a price tag number 29 million, but they have the, the senior center itself at 13, so that...
29 million?
Including land. So they have a building, they have a building for, at 13 million.
What was the cost for the event center?
10.
10 million. I'm just...
Correct.
To put things in perspective, that's...
But these numbers...
That's overblown. I can tell you right now, that's overblown.
Well, the good thing is these are the numbers they submitted and that we're going to be getting money towards, so.
Okay.
But those are the numbers, and...
Right.
And for a, so how, and these are their numbers, the number for a community... number for a community center at Carruthers Park was at 6 million compared to all those others, and that was not including the land. So, the inflated prices they have are very specific to the land acquisition.
Ah, okay. So, probably realistically, maybe about 50 million for all of those, roughly?
Roughly.
Okay. At 292,000 dollars a year, okay. Well, except that we're going to be applying for grants.
And the other thing too is, they will, they are calling certain projects jumbo projects. And when we went to the meeting, they said, "You guys are definitely applying for the jumbo projects because," and there's going to be larger amounts of monies. We're talking a $4 million grant, a $5 million grant that we could potentially get in the competitive grants, so.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Thank you.
One more question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
You have a good day, Mayor.
I'm having a great day.
In your annual Parks and Rec budget, I know you, when you do your budget, you have a needs list, and hopefully you get that, one or two of them needs. And what's the amount of, is it 500,000 usually? I mean, is there an estimate of a needs list of every annual budget?
You mean a wish list?
Wish list. Well, not a wish, a wish list that he got awarded the budget money. You know, you have a budget for maintenance. You have a budget for labor and whatnot and facilities. But, sometimes like, you know, say, "Well, we need to do," you haven't had anything new in a while. What I was getting at, the 392, 392,000, and, you know, if the city's doing good or whatever with our cannabis or whatever, and, you know, we could map some of that and grow stuff in the future.
Yeah, and knowing we, knowing we have this in our toolbox now, it's definitely something we can consider going into each budget cycle.
Because we can make 392 go a long way with some extra money.
Correct. And that's what I think we're going to do with this first project. If the council does wish to put that at priority one, and with soccer field, the city's going to be putting in 2 million, and the grant's only going to be putting in 250,000 for this first one. But, as we plan and as we project for each budget cycle, that's definitely something we can look at if the council is able to, you know, provide that.
Isn't there more land at Thompson Park? Open land for a soccer field?
If we buy that school, maybe.
If, if we were to buy the school.
That would work.
But, the park itself, Sims Park, I believe, is larger. Because of the, because of the parking lot is probably one of the bigger ones. It's a bigger reasons.
Now that you brought that up, the county land that's at Thompson Park, you know, that's fenced off that we used to kind of own, and then they put the fence up. There's a county portion plus the school, right?
The last time we looked into this, it's, it's all the school district. It's the Downey School District. But, they have an agreement with the LA County Office of Education to operate a school on that land. And that, that, the type of school has changed over the years, and typically is a continuation at-risk youth-type school that goes on over there.
I guess what I'm leading into is, you know, there's a dead, there's a land that's being underutilized there. And maybe this is something we need to go after with some of this grant money or something too.
Okay.
That's it.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, before we proceed on, on the motion.
Sorry.
Come on up, Peter.
I have a question for you. Oh, the sports complex. Don't we have a deal with Bellflower to use their new soccer field? Or why are we putting a new one? We already have, they just put a new artificial turf. Don't we still have a deal with Bellflower?
We share.
Yeah, share. So, we're going to make two soccer fields now, basically? One at Bellflower and a new one? I'm not sure.
Great demand.
And we never have enough soccer fields.
In the sports complex, where was that, I was outside. Where would that be located?
We don't have a location.
Okay. Interesting. Thanks.
Anybody else want to comment on this item? I wasn't trying to be rude, but it looks like most of you are falling asleep, so.
And it's not a public game.
Anybody?
So, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, I was just going to ask, I just want to make sure that I understand, based on the, some of the comments I heard here. So, I guess what is on the table for us to consider is, would be moving up the synthetic soccer field to number one, and then it would be the Carruthers Park Community Center number two, and the senior center three? Is that what I'm hearing? I don't want to.
No, I don't think we, I just was, I floated the idea of the community center, what if? I don't know. I don't know if it's the right thing to do. I've just.
And we still have four on there, so the sports complex, I think, would still be two.
Okay.
Unless you guys are reorganizing.
That's what I wanted to confirm before.
If we want to move that, that's what we need to finalize here, what we want to.
Well.
If you have a soccer field.
I would say move the soccer field to number one, and when you get the funding, and you get the money, and you get it built, then we can worry about what to do next. That'd be my personal opinion. You're a long way from making the decision on a $30 million sports complex.
I agree.
Well, Mr. Mayor, then if there's no other questions or comments from the council, then I'd like to make a motion to, to move to approve the prioritize park project list related to the LA County-wide comprehensive park and recreation needs assessment for LA County Measure A funding as proposed by staff tonight.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, let's discuss it some more.
This is a quick question. If we reprioritize the soccer field, when do you, when do you expect this to be started?
Well, let's sell the water company first.
No, we can, no.
We are, we already had it on our list to begin working immediately because we're getting into the next budget year with the Public Works Department to start with specs and plans and everything that needs to go into that type of planning for that type of facility.
Does it take about six months for planning?
Len, wake up out there.
We don't have a precise timeline at this point.
So, we would have to seek proposals for a formal design for.
One year.
Correct.
One year to, one year to what? To?
Construction. One year, one year for construction.
Okay. So, one year for the whole construction?
For the shovel gets in the dirt.
Okay. All right. That's good enough. Thank you.
Anything else? Will you please?
Just want to let you know you're doing a really good job.
Oh, thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Detton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garza.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandy Nez.
Aye.
Mayor Schnoblegger.
Aye. Item 14, the consent calendar. Before we go any farther, I have to recuse myself from 14E and 14F.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recuse myself from 14E, 14J, and 14N due to property conflicts at those three locations.
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict. I have property within the zone on 14G, so I'll be recusing myself from 14G. Sunny, your turn.
Sunny has none.
It's one first.
Me and Sunny never had anything until my father passed away, and now I have to recuse myself.
Darn the bad luck.
Mr. Mayor, can we pull item 14C, please?
14E?
C. Assistant Charlie?
So, 14E. I got to leave, Mr. Attorney? No, okay. Oh, you said C. Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I was going to ask staff if there could be an addition added to the minutes of the special council meeting that we had on February 12th, just to, to add that we asked staff to look at the viability of adding mature trees to that development. But, that completes my request.
Maybe a little bit further. As I recall that conversation, when the staff was directed to buy as mature trees as possible that would still survive and we could afford, we considering the trees for that item. And I thought that was discussed a fair amount.
Yes.
We can certainly add that in. Do you want to continue the minutes to the next meeting? Or just, is the council okay with adding that language in? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, staff.
Thank you. Anybody else want to pull anything? I'll entertain a motion.
So, move. Second.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Okay. Counsel comments. Mr. Sandy Nez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On a side note, I'd like, would like this evening's meeting to be adjourned in memory of longtime Bellflower resident, Jack Wilinga. If I can say a few things about Jack. Jack was born in November 26, 1929, in Irtown, Iowa, and passed away on January 30, 2018, at the age of 88. Jack retired after 40-year, after a 40-year career of driving milk tankers from dairies to creameries across Southern California. After retiring, he continued to work part-time holding orange peel for Marmalade Company and also transporting milk when needed. Over the years, Jack was involved with many activities. He supported, he supported his children in school field trips, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Little League, and various sporting events throughout their high school and college years. Jack and his wife Kathy hosted of four long-term exchange students and many short-term students from different countries, and they became basically their adopted children. Jack volunteered at his church and was a leader in Bellflower Men's Club, Wise Men's Club. Speaking of the church, Kathy and Jack attended St. Bernard's Parish, and I was surprised to learn that Jack was not even a Catholic, and he religiously went to mass every Sunday. Jack was also a leader of the Bellflower Wise Men's Club, and actually, he was one of the founding members of the Wise Men's Club, a board member of the Los Ritos YMCA, a board member for Bellflower's Alternative to Gangs, member of the Bellflower City Association, assisted with Corazon to help build homes in Mexico, which is part of the Heart, Hearts at Work Project, and was a Mills on Wheels volunteer since 1985 until he was not able to drive anymore. Jack received many awards over the years, including Man of the Year for the, from the Los Ritos YMCA, the PTA Honorary Service Award, and of course, our Cedar Bellflower Bravo Award. He was also an honorary for the 36th Annual Older Americans Recognition Day, which was, which was sponsored by the supervisor of the 4th District, Don Conabi. A Hearts at Work Service Award and has been placed in the Golden Book of the Wise Men's International in Geneva, Switzerland. Jack is survived by his wife Kathy, who has been married shy of 64 years. Three sons, Dave, Paul, and Don, two daughters, Sandy and Laura, and their spouses and girlfriends, and together they have 14 grandchildren, eight grand, great-grandchildren, and again, as I mentioned earlier, four exchange student, student daughters. And on a personal note, Jack and Kathy were one of the first couples we met when we were brand-new residents of Bellflower in, in the early 80s. And I'd like to recognize the presence of Kathy in the audience tonight. Kathy, thank you for coming. And Kathy, thank you for sharing Jack with us. He meant the last to us as a community and also to me personally. And so, our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go to the entire Wilinga family, and his memorial service will be on Saturday in Santa Fe Springs. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Coops?
Well, you know, that was one of the longest ones we've had in a long time because Jack was a really good guy. And he didn't have an enemy. And he always was friendly, and he was a model citizen. I last saw him when we dedicated our event center, which was just two weeks ago. And there was an event in Bellflower that Jack and Kathy aren't there. And I'm hopeful that Kathy will continue to be part of that. But, no, Jack was just a wonderful, wonderful man who did great things in our community, not for a year, not for two years, but for his lifetime. And he's going to be missed. And even as his health deteriorated, he always wanted to participate. If there was any way he'd get to a meeting, he would be there. If he needed a ride, he'd get there. I mean, Bellflower participation was that high on his list of things to be done. I guess the most surprising part was, I thought he was a Catholic, but you still liked him, huh? So. But, nevertheless, I just can't say enough good things. I think we should all be more like Jack. Jack always had his heart open. You knew what he was thinking. He always was positive. He's really going to be missed. He was a good guy. That's all I have.
Mr. Garza?
I'd like to also express my condolences to the family. And then just three quick reports. I attended the Metro's Planning and Programming Committee meeting on the 14th of February. Right now, Metro is considering alternatives as to where the light rail that's going to pass through our city is going to end. Originally, it had been planned to end in Union Station. That's still in play, but they're considering having the line maybe end in downtown LA. So, they're going to undertake a study to do that. And so, I went to attend that meeting. I'm going to be going to a March meeting of Metro where the full board is going to be considering those alternative options. I attended the Contract Cities Monthly Meeting in Downey on the 21st at 6:00 PM. It was great to see our colleagues from other cities. And then lastly, I attended the Bellflower Little League Opening Ceremony with our mayor this past Saturday, which is always a refreshing event to go see how our community comes together. Such a nice event. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I, with Mr. Garza, I attended the opening of the Little League, and it really brings back memories. My, my dad, King Cleveland, was the president of the league when they moved that field from North Bellflower to Greater Bellflower. So, I played on that field when it was very first opened, and we were figuring it was about 55 years ago. That field's been there that long. And it really was a pleasure to be there. They've got almost 500 kids playing ball, and it really is a great facility for them. Also, I wanted to say that Mr. Wilinga was always very kind to me, and he was just a very sincere. He didn't do anything to get credit. He just did what he thought was right always, and he just did it out of the love in his heart for this community. And he will be terribly missed, and my condolences go out to the family. With that, I'm going to adjourn.
Hey, Mayor.
Oh, you didn't get a chance?
Did I interrupt you? I interrupt you too many times?
Exactly, exactly.
Compliment you, and then you let him go.
Yeah, if it was, you know, I would have let it go, but I just, you know, it was Mr. Wilinga. It was Jack. He was a part of my life in many ways, and, and he was a great man, a great community man. Jack was just always, in Bellflower, you'd run into him. But, nobody mentioned the pumpkin patch, which he took under his wing for many, many years. He used to stay in his fifth-wheel trailer there and guard all those orange little pumpkins and whatnot. And my kids were there buying pumpkins when they were little ones from, from Jack. But, my condolences Kathy and go out to you, you know, he will be missed. And I just have one more thing to say. Keep the heater on, dress warm because it's going to be cold. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, you're welcome. You know what? Now I lost my spot.
I'm sorry, Ron.
Let's see.
Move for adjournment.
Well, I got to adjourn to the next meeting.
March 12.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn the meeting to the next regular meeting on March 12th at 7:00 o'clock.
But, if you ever saw Jack, you would see his wife. His wife's on that wheelchair there in her car. She had a stroke when she was in Los Angeles, at a sister city thing. And she's always been a nurse. She took me out of school, and she kind of knew she was screwed, so it was weird. She knew she was screwed, so they couldn't make it. But, she knew how to, and that's why, you know, she can get around. She was kind of like that.
Are you going to the YMCA dinner?
Take care of herself. But, ever since then, Jack was, you know, version, trying to get her around.
Thursday night.
And that was probably.
There's something in the email came today.
Yeah, yeah. She had a stroke, Las Vegas, in the sister city.
I got to check it. It's in the event center, see?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And everybody, everybody thought it was a big other way around.
First time.
You never know. And you're like, yeah, Sandy was just talking to him too.
I don't know.
I, I intend to, because my son's in the Y with Sunny, and I got to support the kid. Thanks for coming.
No sweat. Now, what are we going to do?
Got two weeks off before we do it again. Bye. Ray, did you see the invitation to the MCA dinner that came this afternoon?
No.
It's in the...
I know, I know. We got these messages right in.
So what's the deal?
It doesn't say anything down there. So you got the invitation Friday when we were close? I knew it was a meeting, but...
What time's the leave Friday? Oh, because you look two o'clock.
Four or two, four or two.
But you're thinking about four, five o'clock?
Oh, yeah, when we got there, we got there at four.
Well, you got to start a little room.
Got five inches of snow. We got five inches thick, yeah. Until I get in there, it's been cold. Zero degrees, ten degrees, five degrees, whatever. Last year we had more, five feet of snow.